I've heard remedies is really good. They keep something out. I have not tried it, but that's what I've been reading on social media. So, yeah. Yeah. Where is remedy? Is that?
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. We'll call the meeting to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held December 20th?
So move.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. Person who's wishing to address the board. The board sets aside a portion of each meeting agenda to hear from the community members on items of general interest or concern as well as regular agenda items. Comments are limited to five minutes. Less than, more than three people have signed up, but tonight we only have three. So each will get up to five minutes and we'll let you know when you have one minute remaining so you can wrap up your comments. If there are multiple people attending to speak on one topic, we would encourage you to coordinate your comments. When you are called to the podium, please identify yourself and your address and the organization you represent, if you are representing one for the meeting. If you have any visual aids or handouts, please see a member of our communications team prior to the meeting. They will help you distribute the information and prove any item to be shown for public viewing. The board does not take comments during this time on any personnel matters and all meeting attendees are expected to treat others with respect and civility. The board will not respond to individual comments and staff may be requested to follow up as needed following the meeting. Thank you for coming and tonight our first speaker will be, it's all on non-agenda topics tonight. It will be Michelle Klemic. If you please address and state your name and address. Thank you.
I am Michelle Klemic. I live at 4401 East Howard Circle here in Sioux Falls. First, I want to thank you for in-person learning. It's been great. My son did virtual and with in-person learning, there's a better attitude and there's a more of a challenge in class versus the virtual. So thank you for that. I also want to shout out Washington High School. Go Warriors. The ladies at front desk who answer the phone calls every time I call. Wonderful. I want to shout out the principal, Carrie, and then Mr. Mao Chow and Michelle in the athletic department. Amazing people, always answering my questions, listening to my concerns. Sports is a big thing for my son and without that, you know, he, I think he'd be a little lost on, you know, he is, does well academically, but that brings him and his friends together. So I want to give them a big shout out too. Last thing, real quick, I'd like to encourage the school board to continue to allow parents, Sioux Falls district families to make any, any medical decisions for their children. So I want to thank you for that, letting us decide what's best for our families and our son going forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have Chad Bishop.
My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Olenia Drive here in Sioux Falls. Actually, I prepared this, but I do have a change of heart. I think I want to explain something else and so, haven't done this for a while. Shoot off, shoot from the hip. But, so, obviously I have a different point of view than many and so I'd like to explain the context behind that. When I was about 11 is before I moved downstairs, so that's how I recall it. I got up from the dinner table one evening and was trying to beat my mom to the computer. I was intent upon playing a new version of Castle Wolfenstein and she was intent upon working on a grant letter for a handicap writing association facility she wanted to open in Aberdeen. And so I beat her, but on the way I fell into the wall and just lost my balance. And so, got up, brushed it off, complained of tingling in my feet to my parents that night. And then the next morning I woke up unable to walk and crawled to the bathroom crying out for my mom, dad. Didn't understand what was going on. Dr. Hart in Aberdeen, my dad carried me into the emergency room and Dr. Hart in Aberdeen at that time. It took a few days to get back to us, but explained to us what I had was called French polio and that I would recover. But my mother, by virtue that her little sister had actually been confined to a wheelchair because of polio and was a paraplegic, it was cause for great concern. Now, I recovered fully, but in 1997, my elderly uncle, my dad's oldest brother, he ended up coming ill with what was called Guillain-Barre at the time. He spent nine months at the VA in Sturgis on his back, three of them on a respirator, fully conscious. And so, these two things, French polio is also known as Guillain-Barre. The genetic link is unknown, but we had been asked to participate in the study at the time. Ultimately, it wasn't funded to determine what was the potential link. So, the, it went on. I was working as an engineer with my wife for Motorola in Fort Worth, Texas. And the plant there had a medical facility and they had flu clinics on offer. So you could go down and sign up and I did. We didn't have any reason not to do that at the time. And then filled out the paperwork and go and sit down and I'm actually having my shoulder swabbed. And all of a sudden, the nurse cries out, whoa, where's Chad Bishop? And I raised my hand and she says, is this your paperwork? And she comes over and I had checked off one of the four questions if you get a flu shot today. One of the questions that's there is have you ever suffered from Guillain-Barre or from French polio? And I was quietly taken aside and explained that they would not administer a flu shot to me. At that time in Fort Worth, the Harris Hospital system, I met with an infectious disease immunologist and they explained to me the history behind the swine flu vaccine development and the outbreak of Guillain-Barre that occurred during that time. So, for my family, we began this discussion when the pandemic set in with both physicians and with politicians because I feared exactly what is happening now was going to happen. Mandates across the board for vaccines developed too hastily. And when the J and J was paused for the purpose of acknowledging Guillain-Barre outbreaks had occurred, that it kind of vindicated our position. We'd basically, for our family, we had serial converted and become antibody positive prior to the vaccine being made available to either my wife, I, or any of my kids. My kids being the ones I'm most concerned about. Knowing what it would do, a relapse could do to me and to my family, we were trying to, you know, took the precautionary principle and by virtue that we recovered and we understood that if we had recovered, we had converted upon us by the infection. S-type antibodies, N-type antibodies, the 24 or 27 others, S, or excuse me, IgA antibodies in the mucosal layer of our lungs, full B-cell responses and T-cell responses. And so, that level of immunity, it's a spectrum of immunity, I acknowledge that, is the most robust that we've seen. It's been the most robust against the original alpha and beta. The Israeli data has borne out that it's been the most robust in response to the delta and now we're seeing it with all the breakthrough cases and the fully vaccinated and fully boosted in Omicron. And so I speak on my behalf and on my family's behalf, but I also speak for the others who have real concerns at the rate at which these things are developed. And to cast them aside and to basically do as our president has done, the president or the prime minister of Canada, and to basically other them as irresponsible is absolutely a disgrace. And so when I come to you and I ask for you to change policies and technology, the robust and wide, and, excuse me, thank you.
Thank you, Chad. And last, Angela Greiner. Just state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Angie Greiner. My address is 501 East Sunnybrook Drive. Spur of the moment, decided to make it in here today. I haven't made it to a meeting for a couple of months. I have known a lot of people that have been coming down with the COVID and so I was nervous that we might all get a little skittish and think about changing our current policies. And I just want you to know that those of us who have supported the policies as they are, meaning family choice, just because I haven't been here, I'm still supporting you on that. So I just want to reach out to you and say that, that our choices are extremely important to us and I appreciate you to continue that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. And that is it for public input for this evening. Move on to approval of our agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Our agenda is approved. Onto the good news report, Deanne.
Good evening. A new year is a really great opportunity to introduce a change to our good news report. Once a month, moving forward, we're going to be featuring a school spotlight by inviting the principal to spend a few minutes highlighting the school's achievements and what makes their building, their students and their staff unique. So, we will do that in just a second by inviting Principal Dustin Mees from Eugene Field A-plus Elementary, just after Dr. Stavum has a few words to add.
Yep. I just want to thank Deanne and her staff for getting us ready for this. We have a template of slides because we know our principals have a lot to do and getting a presentation ready is helpful, but we also wanted to give them some good tools to do that. So thank you for making this happen. This is something that was something I brought from another district and I think it's really important and probably even more important than it ever has been because if you remember last year, we didn't have people coming in and out of our schools like we normally do and I think COVID kind of changed our picture. And one of the most important things is making sure that people feel connected with all of our schools and regularly hear an update just about what's really happening with our students. I don't know if this used to happen in Sioux Falls or not, or if this is brand new, but this is something we'll put in place so that we can keep hearing about specific things happening at elementaries, middle and high schools. And then their number won't be up again for, I don't know what, a couple of years. Dustin, you're off the hook. So we appreciate Eugene Field being first tonight and he can say ha-ha to all of his colleagues at our next administrator meeting because he got it finished. So Dustin, with that, thank you for coming and we're looking forward to your report.
All right. Thank you. And I should say it's fitting we're going first because we have A-plus in our title. So I think you made a good choice. All right. So, as Deanne said, my name's Dustin Mees. I'm the principal at Eugene Field A-plus Elementary School. I just wanted to start by thanking you for the opportunity to be here and talking about our school and what I think makes it such a great place to be. Just to begin, as I said, we have A-plus in our title, so I want to talk a little bit about what that is. My goal for visiting tonight with you is just to give a real good summary of the well-rounded education that Eugene Field A-plus provides for their students. So our slogan is, "We're Eagles SOAR." That ties into a lot of things at our school. Our mascot is the Eagles. We use that in our PBIS social emotional support and we'll talk about that a little later. So EF A-plus provides arts plus academic specialized learning by following the A-plus Schools of North Carolina model while adhering to state standards and Sioux Falls School District curriculum. Our mission, Eugene Field A-plus Elementary recognizes that people are smart in many ways. Our mission is to provide a strong academic program by using drama, visual art, music and dance to meet the needs of each and every student. We're very excited to be in our 21st year of providing A-plus learning for students. Very short history, I believe a few schools in South Dakota tried to emulate what North Carolina was doing and we're proud to still be standing and serving students strong. So EF A-plus has just completed 20 years last year and we're regularly recognized as an exemplary A-plus school by the A-plus Schools of North Carolina. To give a quick summary before we dive deeper, I just have a video to share that was put together by our media group here as we try to promote open enrollment to our school.
As the only A-plus school in South Dakota, the Eugene Field A-plus community views the arts as fundamental to teaching and learning. Because of this, Eugene Field strives to develop a creative culture in which curriculum is taught through collaboration and multidiscipline integration. As a result, the arts are continuously woven into every child's learning experience. The mission at Eugene Field recognizes that people are smart in many ways and celebrates these multiple intelligences. This is accomplished through curricular connections, varied assessments and opportunities for students to engage and explore different ways to learn. If your child would benefit from a learning environment that emphasizes multiple intelligences and arts-integrated learning opportunities, Eugene Field A-plus may be a great fit. Families have many choices when it comes to their child's education. We appreciate you considering us. If you have questions or would like to set up a tour, please reach out to the Eugene Field office. Accepting applications at all grade levels. Open enrollment window opens December 1st.
All right. Well, Deanne fixes that for me. The next slide is just showing a little bit about our school and the breakdown of enrollment. So currently, we have 389 students in our school. One thing that I believe is unique to us as a specialized school is we actually have a home attendance center as part of our school, which we celebrate. It provides us a very wide demographic when you have your home attendance center plus that open enrollment aspect. We have students across the entire school district that attend our school. What is the A-plus experience? So, in short, additional arts exposure. We have additional specials at our school. We have the usual library, music, art and PE classes. Students also get to experience weekly specials in dance and drama. We have a dedicated arts integration class every week and there's a lot of collaboration that goes into that class with our art teacher and classroom teacher working together to co-teach a lesson every week to take learning deeper by providing that art experience. We also have innovation lab that is a STEAM lesson. Some schools have maker spaces. It's very similar to that, but we include the arts and that's where that A comes from in STEAM. Arts and multiple intelligences are integrated into instruction, learning and assessment. When you walk through our school and you see art hanging, it could just be a piece of artwork or it could be an assessment. It could be a lesson. We try to integrate that opportunity into as much as we can. Another piece that's unique to our school is we provide performance opportunities every year for all. The district, I believe, in general has performances at second and fourth grade and then we also have instrumental performances. At Eugene Field A-plus, students have an opportunity to be on stage and perform in front of others at every grade level. We have informances at K-1. We combine a 2, 3 vocal concert, 4, 5 vocal concert and of course, we have our 4th and 5th grade orchestra and band concerts. We'll talk a little bit of the perks to why that experience is so important a little bit later on. We also are excited to be hosting our 28th full production musical this spring. That's a piece that's been missing as Dr. Stavum commented about just going through the pandemic and losing some of our opportunities to showcase what we do. Excited to bring that back and there's a few pieces in the room that I'll talk about later that are from some past musicals. We also have a very high participation in band and orchestra programs. There's very few students at our school who don't give that instrumental piece a try and I think that's part of the culture of encouraging students to take risks. It's okay to try something new and understanding that going through practice will help you be able to achieve those goals. All right. We also have four art galleries that are permanent art galleries in our building. We have students work on display at all times. It's very important to us that every student has a piece of artwork on display because we are working and growing artists. We also hold art shows throughout the school year in combination with our concerts. So every student is able to, be able to show outside of the typical conference time, the work that they've been doing in a more formal setting. And lastly, we have just a quick summary of a lot of the things that we try to focus on. As the video mentioned, multiple intelligences is a big piece of what we try to do and incorporate into our lessons, understanding that students come with very different strengths and we want to celebrate those. And then also helping students not only identify what those strengths are for them, but sharpening those multiple intelligence skills to be better problem solvers. So, one of the pieces we have is called MI Exchange. Once a month, if you kind of picture a K through 5 cohort group or family comes together once a month to do an integrated art lesson with kind of a homeroom teacher. And then as 5th graders graduate, new kindergartners join that family and it really creates a very cultural, culture experience for our building. Kids get to know each other. It gives our older kids a leadership opportunity. We hold MI Days throughout the year. We're excited that this Thursday is the first one back since we opened back up to school. We're very excited to have 16 community members come to present to different classes on various MI skills. And then we also have began last year a concept called Camp Golden Eagle. This ends our school year in a kind of camp atmosphere. It's very much tied to standards and provides integrated learning experiences for students, but we kind of theme everything around camp. Our field day at the end of the year is called the Camp Olympics. It just kind of helps engage students in those final days of the school year. Participate in the South Dakota Arts Council Artist in Residence Program to provide those professional experiences, bringing in South Dakota artists to work with students. And we, as I mentioned, we have been working on through PBIS that's providing positive behavior intervention supports for students and we work on that through the acronym SOAR in our school. And students are able to be recognized in many ways for all the positive choices that they make. We also have very, a lot of student leadership opportunities through not only student council, but we also use our 4th and 5th grade students very often to be role models for our younger students in the building. All right. How is that experience created? It comes with a lot of professional development and teachers working together through collaborative teams. We receive professional development lessons or learning for our staff with the A-plus Schools of North Carolina. We also have building level PD every month and we have a primary focus. Part of that PD is on that A-plus integration, kind of looking at where does that arts piece fit into our curriculum and how can we integrate it while keeping the integrity of our curriculum? Also, all teams hold weekly collaborations. Also, all teams hold weekly collaborations. One thing that is unique to our building is that our specials teams, what we call our arts team, attend those collaborations regularly. We also have additional collaborations where grade-level teams meet with the arts team to create integrated lesson opportunities. We have a staff that practices what we teach. We have several staff who are either professional performers in bands, working artists in the community. Maybe they help support putting on productions by working behind the scenes, so that all those experiences create a very unique school for students to come learn in. We have very supportive families with active PTA, and that team works very hard to make sure that the events that they plan throughout the year address all the different multiple intelligences as we focus on what kind of opportunities we provide families. All right, and then lastly, how does this impact our students? So like I said, I mentioned the word engagement a little bit. We have 94% school average attendance on our last state report. Just in a quick check, that's above the state and district average. Very excited to say that we have only a 5% mobility rate. So as I understand that statistic, we are keeping students K-5. We're keeping 95% of those students who join us and at Eugene Field. We have higher retention rates in extracurricular activities as students move through their education, and they're also very active in community programs with community theater, sports, and things like that. All right, students become, these are kind of the big takeaways. When I was new to Eugene Field last year, these were some of the things I noticed as soon as I walked in the door of classrooms. Students become comfortable in taking risks. Students develop the skills of giving and receiving constructive feedback. Maybe they're critiquing a piece of artwork or a performance from a colleague. Students participate in a culture where all learning styles are celebrated. So as we get close to ending, I just wanted to share a couple parent statements. This first one is from a parent who's actually here tonight. Kelsey's in the crowd, so hopefully I quote you correctly. I wanted Kelsey to share because she's a new parent to EFA Plus. She has a 1st grade student who joined us this year, and she says, "EFA Plus is a great fit for our child. As a new family to the school, we hope that our child would be exposed to unique opportunities that challenge him to be a risk taker, both in educational and social settings. We've noticed a shift at home regarding our school conversations. Our son enjoys sharing about his learning, setting goals, and celebrating when he achieves them. This growth mindset is fostered at EFA Plus. Their staff believe in every child and strive to meet every need. We have watched our son embrace uncomfortable tasks and develop strategies to help himself be successful. EFA Plus is a special place, and we're grateful to be a part of the family there." And this last parent statement comes from a parent who has had children in Eugene Field for quite a while. Their oldest is now actually in middle school. So this is from Jamie Hill, calling her the veteran EFA Plus parent. Eugene Field A+ Elementary has and continues to be the elementary school of choice for our family. We made the choice to open enroll and send our children to EFA Plus in order to provide them with the opportunity to participate in all the arts plus activities that the school offers, and I am so glad we did. Our oldest daughter, who is now in 7th grade, attended this school from kindergarten to 5th grade. Our two sons continue to learn and thrive at EFA Plus as a 5th grade student and a 3rd grade student. This school believes that all students are smart in many ways and incorporates the eight multiple intelligences, or MI, into many aspects of teaching and learning. Having three very different children who all learn and thrive in very different ways, this school could not be a more perfect fit. Our children are not only exposed to music, PE, and art, but also get experience with dance and drama. They have learned to embrace the challenge and persevere when things get hard. They have grown in confidence while learning independence and how to manage their own learning. The staff pour their heart and soul into each and every student, and I can say this from a firsthand account as she used to teach there. The impact that the staff has had on students is insurmountable. The philosophy towards learning cannot be matched, and the opportunities students are provided are ones they will never forget." All right, and lastly, just closing with a few pictures of events we've had this year. Just wanted to share that we have some things on display that will be at IPC this week. We have some pictures of past musicals, artwork that's from one of our galleries. Kind of hurt to rip those off the wall, but want to be able to share those with others. But these are pieces of art that are part of our legacy gallery. They're students that 5th graders get to submit their ultimate or best piece of artwork at the end of their time at Eugene Field, and staff anonymously vote on that, and then it becomes a permanent piece of the building, so honoring their legacy and the impact that they had while they were at our school. And then that lion headdress is from one of the past musicals as well, from Lion King. There's some writing pieces. When I talked about concerts, I forgot to mention that we offer integrated concert experiences. So if you come to one of our concerts, you'll not only hear some of the best music that you've heard students perform in an elementary, but you'll hear students writing, be able to see their artwork, and get to experience a whole integrated concert experience. All right, just in closing, I wanted to see if anyone had questions that I could help answer.
Principal Meese, Eugene Field A+ is just a wonderful school, and it's a great commitment from the Sioux Falls School District to our community to give opportunity and choices to our families. You know, this is a great fit for a lot of our families. We offer the Challenge Center and Spanish immersion, two-way immersion, and other opportunities for our families to fit what the needs of their family is. So Laura Tajian is a friend of mine who's been the music chorus there and puts on the productions, and she's just, if you haven't seen her, she performs as Sugar Daddy as well, all the community. She's amazing. It's just, she's just an amazing person, and just thank you for all you do at your building for our families and students.
Absolutely, thank you.
I remember walking through when we did some additions not that long ago, and I was shocked to see that you had this amazing dance studio. And I thought, well, that makes sense because that is such a big part of this school. And so I just thought that that was a really cool, it's not just that you go into a classroom and you, you know, you dance in a music room or something like that. The kids actually get to experience being in a dance class. And just some of those unique things that I thought were great touches to the building. And I have friends who have kids that attend there and have nothing but great things to say. So again, like Cynthia said, students and families have different needs, and it's awesome that we're able to match some of those and help those kids excel at such a young age. And the skills that they really, that they learn really are lifelong. They don't end when they graduate and go on to another school. They're great skills for them to have, so good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you as much.
Oh, there's more. Okay, thank you, Deanne. I'll move on to, there were no new conflicts of interest presented, so we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Items 9A through D, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. On to supplemental consent agenda, item 10A, approving claims of Sanford Occupational Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. One abstention from Board Member Ryder. On to reports of the Superintendent, item 11A, request for waivers. Lee Beckeys.
I come to you tonight as part of a public hearing, which must be held for school districts in order to apply for waivers from administrative rules. Tonight, I will be requesting permission for the Sioux Falls School District to apply for two waivers from South Dakota administrative rules. I've been before you before, asking about the Plan of Intent Waivers for Certification. And a Plan of Intent is an agreement between the district, a teacher, and the Department of Education, knowing that a teacher is not certified in the area for which they're teaching, and it lies out the plan for the teacher to become certified. In most cases, a teacher has two years to become fully certified in their content area, and then through this process, may request one more year, so three total years. This year, we have individuals that, in the areas of journalism, elementary education with Spanish immersion, secondary math, gifted ed, library, science, economics, and CTE assignments, who are going to need that third year to meet all of the requirements. In the past couple years, we've had a spike in the number of total plans of intent that we've needed, mostly to do with how the state has categorized special education core content and the certifications needed for those special education teachers to serve. And this past year, there was a steep increase of over 100 more Plan of Intents needed across the district. Again, part of that was special ed, but then the other part was this trend that we're seeing, where we are hiring individuals on alternative certifications to the state of South Dakota. Part of their process is a Plan of Intent. And it's not necessarily bodies that count for Plans of Intent. Every subject they teach is a new Plan of Intent. So if you're an auto tech teacher and you have 30 years in the industry, and we've hired you out at our CTE Academy, if you're teaching small engine repair and auto body finishing and welding, that's three Plans of Intent. So just for an example. Teachers pursuing their required certifications under a Plan of Intent receive mentoring and support from their fully certified JABA-like teachers and instructional coaches, and the district also supports these teachers by funding the costs of praxis test exams and test prep materials. Now, the second waiver that we would be requesting is the Long-Term Substitute Requirement, and this one is new. We haven't, I haven't come before you with this before, but a new administrative rule requires long-term substitutes or anyone who is teaching for 45 days or more to be fully certified in the area in which they're teaching, unless they are covering an absence for someone who is on FMLA, and that absence would exceed more than 45 days. Our substitute teacher pool doesn't have very many fully certified candidates. We have a few retirees in there, but they've retired, and they're mostly not interested in doing long-term assignments. So this first semester, I will be reporting to the South Dakota Department of Ed that we'll need 11 long-term substitutes who taught for 45 days or more who did not have full state certification. And again, just like our teachers that are pursuing their alternative certification or working on their endorsement, these substitutes are supported by their fully certified JABA-like teachers, instructional coaches, and administration to make sure they're successful in the classroom. Does anybody have any questions?
indicative of the workforce shortages we're seeing of what we're needing to do to address those. So I'm glad that you mentioned the supports we have for these people who might need still some more training and so forth, and they're to know, so that we're helping to move them along and be successful in the classroom. So thank you.
I will open up the public hearing. If any of the public would like to address this topic, they may approach the podium and once again state their name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize the administration to proceed with the applications for waivers from administrative rules?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged. On to public hearing number two, the 2022 Capital Improvement Project.
Looks like a night for public hearings, so. My public hearings are for various construction projects as required by law. We have to have public hearings for projects that we're building footprints or new construction in the building. And we have four projects tonight. I always have a tendency to be slow on the slides. So the first project is Roosevelt High School. This project will expand the fitness weight room, similar to Lincoln and Jefferson High Schools, provide training room and PE coaches' office areas to meet the district's standards, provide additional multipurpose gym storage, provide exterior restrooms for security attached to the building. Those are what the CIP bond covered. Then we're going to roll in a few other projects that are covered under the capital outlay in all of these. So you kind of have the same structure in all these projects. What we'll do in the capital outlay is provide football soccer storage building at the practice field area, renovate existing gymnasium layout, including new bleachers, floor refinishing, and paint, enclose the media area and wrestling room, update ceiling floors, paint in the athletic wing, air-conditioned fitness weight room, update intercom and clock systems, and replace exterior wall lights with LED, and construct a north service drive and receiving asphalt area. That's the only area that we haven't reconstructed, and that's, those are original asphalt spots. So that will be what's included in the project. The project will bid in winter '22 with completion scheduled for summer of '23. The projects identified in fiscal years '22 and '23 of the capital outlay budget is a portion of that, and the bond portion is $2.2 million, and capital outlay is $1.285 million. So that is that project. Next one is Washington High School, and I'm not going to go through every one of those. This is almost identical. I'll just show you what the differences are. Okay, the differences are, we're going to be building a tennis, soccer, football storage area out by the tennis courts. We're going to convert a computer classroom into standard classrooms and modify A2-237 science room living in the built-in and putting electric outlets into the floor. We did that to about eight other science rooms in the past, and we have one left to do. Then we'll be removing some student lockers in three cross corridors and putting some tables in those areas for students. So they don't utilize them, so we're going to try to reclaim some of the spaces. We asked Roosevelt if they wanted that, and they didn't want that. So we're letting a little bit of the building decide. This two, this project will be also bid '22. They'll be actually bid as a combination, independent or combined, so we'll see if we can get some benefits out of combining them together. And these two will be fiscal year '22, '23 for the capital portion. Construction for the bond is $2.2 million, and the capital outlay is a little over $1.5 The next project is Central Services Center addition and renovation project. This project will construct new vehicle and equipment storage addition, provide room for the existing vehicle storage area. That will be converted into a purchasing, will be able to expand purchasing, the department's delivery and staging area for more efficiency. Then we've had some changes from the original CIP for this project. Original CIP constructed, was going to construct a training room. We're going to, we are going to renovate an existing space for the early child screening area. We've since moved them to the old New Tech High School, which will eliminate the need for that addition. But we're going to renovate the early child in and expand the renovations into our existing area. We'll incorporate those training rooms into our existing footprint, so we won't have to build the addition, but we'll offset the renovation costs with that. The capital outlay portion will provide the modifications in the vehicle storage room, and we'll repair damaged metal wall panels and reconstruct the south service asphalt area. We did the front parking lot this summer, and this will take care of the other remaining portion that hasn't been reconstructed. Okay, this project will be bid probably late summer '22 and with completion scheduled for '23. This will be funded out of fiscal year '22, '23, '22, '24, so in the capital outlay. So there's about three years of funding for this throughout. So there's about three years of funding for this throughout, kind of spread that out. The bond portion is $2.9 million. Furniture and equipment will be about $200,000 and the capital outweigh would be $539,000. Okay, and the next, the final one tonight is Lincoln, Roosevelt and Washington High Schools athletic turf and lighting projects. This will be a bond-related project. We're going to reconstruct the existing main football field at each of the high schools and install lighting and synthetic turf similar to the Jefferson High School. Also included is we're going to install data to the fieldhouse from the main building. We don't, out of Jefferson, we put the data connection so they can do cameras and do a lot of other things with that and we'll be doing that at the, this while we're doing This project, we're just getting started with the design. We haven't got with the buildings yet, but we've got the initial layouts that we'll be reviewing with the buildings in the next couple of weeks. We'll bid it February, March. We'll be able to do a pretty quick turnaround because the same engineer that did Jefferson's is designing this, this project. As far as completion, we're thinking in 2023. The exact schedule will be determined once we get a contractor on board, if we're going to do two this year, one this year, or two and one, one and two, depending on what their schedule will be. So we're going to work with them on what the most advantageous schedule because we really need to make sure we don't disrupt the activities as we move forward. So we'll be working with the buildings and determining how that works on the exact schedule. So estimated project cost is just over $2 million per site. The difference is the length of that data and, and fiber runs out to that building. Okay, so with that, this is a public hearing, so I'll let you do that.
I'll open up the public hearing. Comments from the public? Yeah, just come up to the mic and just introduce yourself again, Chad. Five, three minutes for public comment.
Thank you. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valenciaga Drive here in Sioux Falls. My input on this topic is the same as it was a few months ago. I would like for consideration to be given in capital outlay for the facilities in the district to give consideration to expansion of kitchens in and on-site and move away from the central services model. I understand the cost impact of this, but in the same way that you're innovative in the types of education that you offer at Eugene Field, at Hall City, at Robert Frost, at the immersion centers, you can do the same and innovate with respect to child nutrition. We're coming out of a pandemic where the primary risk to an individual who has adverse outcomes is their age and then secondary is obesity, tertiary is kidney and function is a function likely of metabolic disorder, and then obesity, hypertension. And we find out from Director Walensky of the CDC today that 75% of those who have succumbed to COVID-19 have four or more comorbidities. So you have within your care 28,000, 24,000, my mistake, children and the opportunity that you have is to move away from the U.S. Department of Agriculture's mandates and to exceed them. And by doing that, by removing highly processed foods from the food that these kids are fed every day, from the time, especially in those who are in title schools who are eating breakfast and lunch, they're receiving sometimes, you've seen my data, but sometimes three and four times the daily amount of added sugar that's recommended by the American Heart Association and American Pediatric, American Academy of Pediatrics, not in a day, but in a single meal. And what you're doing is you're laying down hyper addictive neural pathways and you're establishing habits that will follow them for the rest of their life. And so if there's a time to discuss the impact of nutrition on our society, if we understand our collective risk over the last two years has been a function of chronic disease in our society, that obesity, diabetes, and probably at its root, hyperinsulinemia, then we could actually address root cause and solve these problems at their root in the cheapest way possible. There'd be a massive investment upfront and that's why I'm asking for here, not necessarily consideration at this moment, but consideration going forward and engaging with your staff who they do have a heart for this type of message. And I understand it's a function of educating the population in this city and educating yourselves. That's what I attempt to do here from time to time. And just as an update, we do expect we're going to have some working software to actually analyze your menus and the data that you offer in real time in the next two months. So that will be fun. We're going to give you a badge, red, yellow and green with respect to what the American Heart Association, American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization recommends for added daily sugar per meal. And then we're going to have to set up what we call a sugar budget and maybe we'll give you reports from time to time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? There's one, there's another question. Just state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Leah Anderson, 1809 East Otanca Ridge here in Sioux Falls. I wasn't planning to speak, but those numbers are astronomical and I agree with Chad. We need to address health. Everybody wants to push masks and vaccines on our kids, but we need to talk about what they're missing, vitamins, good nutrition. So I totally agree.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any comments, questions from the board for Chad?
I was just remembering back, is Roosevelt's, is it 30 years this year that it's been open? Roosevelt has been open for 30 years this year, correct?
Yeah.
So I mean, when you look at some of the changes that are, how long that initial construction and how long we have had those bleachers and all of those things, and this is really our first change that we're making to that building, that was a good investment 30 years ago to get us started. So I just, that just stuck out to me because my sister was the first class that started as freshman there. But I think some of these things are very needed as well. I know you guys have heard me talk in the past about the bleachers at the schools and I think from a safety perspective, getting those updated so that people can come and enjoy our students participating in those events and our gymnasiums and feel safe walking up and down the bleachers is an important thing. So it's not all cosmetic. I think a lot of it is for safety and ADA types of changes as well. So I am excited to see the changes that we have coming over the next couple of years and it'll just enhance the students' experience in our, in our buildings.
Could you also maybe give a quick, brief history of how these CIP projects come up? This wasn't like the first time we heard about them or know them, how many years in process we kind of go through this and how that's all established? Because so the public doesn't think, oh, this is just the first time how this is all evaluated and brought to you.
Well, it kind of comes from a lot of different sources. Our big CIP planning process was a big part of this. We've also laid out a lot of preventive maintenance projects, life cycle, and that's kind of, they're kind of sitting down here and will hit when the ages, they age out. And we try, trying to roll some of those into these projects so we get efficiency of contractors on-site and efficiencies of that. But we have a, we have a, we have actually a book of all the pieces of the equipment and all those buildings, the ages of everything, and we look at the national life cycle costs or timing. Some, some would go early, some would go later. I mean, we, we don't just do it because it's time. I mean, but some of the like are made chillers and those sort of things. We follow those fairly rigid because you can't afford to have those go out or fail at a certain, you know, you know, like say we're in school and we have a chiller that fails and you can't replace it. And especially in today's world, you can't get one. So we try to bring all this together, make the most efficient use of our resources when we do that. There's spreadsheets with each building, where in those are, what their tentative schedule is. We try to roll those into these, like I said, and so it comes together in a lot. And we did present some of those. We tried to get some of this in the bonds, but it was, you didn't, you really didn't need to. You had to, we have a, the O and M, every year we have a pot of money that we, the five-year, 10-year cycle that Todd puts together and we put, we plug those in at that according. And that's a capital outweigh portion of that. Parking lots, everything has a life cycle and we kind of try to stay ahead of that so we don't have a huge bunch of projects that have to come together, so.
I think you made an important note too, when you talked about the bond, a lot of these projects were discussed as we determined the amount that we would be asking the public, public to support us with. So a lot of these projects were part of that bond conversation. So we knew that they were going to come up and we knew that we would be using bond money to cover the cost of those. So again, part of the process, very lengthy, lengthy process of having these conversations and bringing it up for tonight.
And I think central services, it was on that, but we're not so rigid that we don't, aren't flexible with that project because we found an opportunity with New Tech moving to the new high school and utilizing and not just building because we're building. So we're always trying to do what's best for the taxpayers' dollars.
And of those voters that showed up to vote, there was an 85 approval, percent approval rate. So it had broad support.
Yep.
And with the turf and the lighting, I think it's important, so Jefferson's new, we made that obligation to Jefferson and when we do that at one school, we make a promise to the other schools, basically, we're going to have equal facilities for those buildings. And you think, well, is it just football? No, it's marching band, it's all these activities, which goes also to the health of the student of being engaged in their school, being active in their school and actually a physical activity as well. And when we, I'll use Lincoln's example, when it's flooded down there because of where it's located, that field's unusable and those kids are out of practice for football, band, all those things and also their PE classes that they have out there. So it's, it's a way for us, yes, we're going to have a front-end expense, but the maintenance, the repairs and those type of thing on the backend are going to be dramatically changed.
Yeah. The amount of kids that will be able to utilize it every day. I mean, a lot of, a lot of those schools that got Roosevelt, they don't use that main field. They keep that just for the games. So now they'll be able to use it.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Chad? Seeing none, do I have motion to acknowledge the 2022 CIP bid and project report?
So moved. Second.
We're also looking for authorization for us to proceed with the planning and proceed into the bidding phase of the projects.
Yes. Do I have an authorization, motion to authorize?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor of authorization signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are both approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Move on to the technology report. Emmett, first report, we won't be so hard on you, maybe.
Well, I appreciate you not being hard on me because I did it the hard way. I didn't bring all of my stuff and put it on this computer. So you're going to have to give it to me just a second. Hook it up. Well, first and foremost, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come. As most of you know, I've been here with the district for six months, but I started my educational career when I was a wee little lad. And I don't mean that in the way that I started as a student, like all of us did. I grew up in a household of two educator parents, so you can imagine what every meal time was discussing. It was education. And then my older brother and my older sister, one of my older sisters is, is also in education. One used to do similar to what I do. She's since stopped doing that and teaches and I have a brother that teaches and enjoys it thoroughly. But I enjoy the crossroad between education and technology. I believe that technology is one of those things that can accelerate something, improve it and drive it to a place that it couldn't go without it when it's applied properly. So I've got a few slides. I don't expect for this to be all-inclusive. It's not going to cover every project or every activity that the technology department ever sees or does, but hopefully it'll give you a good swath or idea of what we're, what we've done thus far this year. So I just put this slide in here for informational purposes. I'm sorry for those of you in the audience that can't see those tiny little squares and what they say, but I wanted to make just a clear picture of the amount of staffing that we provide for ourselves to get the work done with technology across the district. And also in the little diagram there, you'll see how many buildings are attached to each technician. So sometimes people think, oh, you've got one technician per building or you've got, no, they're, they're spread across and we use them as efficiently as possible to get all the work that we can get done, completed. And I would say that we here at Sioux Falls do a really efficient job at using our, our full-time employees. So things are changing all the time and one of the benefits of technology is that it's kind of like building a plane while you fly it all the time. So for years, schools have had technology departments to support teachers and they support administrative staff and office staff, and over those years, that's changed. You, many of you have been involved here since they rolled out the Chromebooks and the iPads and then now we've rolled out new staff laptops and new techno, you know, new displays to our, our teachers so that they can improve the quality of technology that they use. That was a big undertaking, both of those projects. One was old and continues. We continue to replace our iPads every five years as they age out and we, and we rotate in our Chromebooks at grades two, six and nine so that there's, we try to keep them as fresh and as nice as we can keep them, especially as we know how children use that technology every day and it takes some wear and tear. We, we continue to deploy and use more and more software. So as I talked about, things change over time. Technology departments used to work directly with staff, almost that was their entire support structure, was to work with teachers and staff, and now we support students and even sometimes families and parents. We have software packages, cloud-based, on-campus and custom-made software that we deploy. And this is just a small list of them because I didn't want to inundate you with a slide with headwinds that were in like .2 font, but I wanted to give you an idea of some of the software that's out there. You know, our parents are always interacting with Infinite Campus and some of these software is Schoology for our middle school students. And we play a role in making sure that those integrations work effectively, that the data moves where it's supposed to and that people can access them effectively on the days they need them. Something that was big this, over the last year is that we replaced a large portion of our infrastructure, our wireless and wired infrastructure. So to make all those applications in Chromebooks functional and usable, we have to have really good bandwidth. And we upgraded all of these access points across the district. They were done in phases starting in March all the way through the summer and we continue to roll out a few, a handful of them as some of our other construction projects complete and place those access points in place. We're also able to extend the life of some of our, our switching technology by extending the licensing for extra years, which improves the return on investment for us as a district. We got some good news from the state recently that attaches to this that I didn't provide in the, in the documentation that we will be able to upgrade our bandwidth between our sites. We currently run one and two, one and three gig connections between our sites and 10 gig connections at our, at our primary back halls and we'll be able to upgrade our, all of our sites to 10 gigs and 25 gigs for our back halls. So that'll be a big improvement for the experience in our classrooms with the technology to be out. So we have some new products that are projects that are coming on this year that are hopefully going to improve some operational efficiency. One of these, these tools is called Certify. Certify reads data from our, our student information system. It validates that data, looks to see if it matches the criteria that's expected. Some people might think, well, when I go to put in a date in a field that wants a date, it only will take a date, so why do you need to validate it? I'll give you an example. A student, a parent may go to the online registration form and they may put in a grade that they, and they accidentally select, let's say, second grade, but their student's birthdate says that the student's 17 years old. Those are both valid information, but they don't correlate and therefore become invalid data. Historically, we've had to write our own queries to solve all of those and to try to troubleshoot and find all of that data and then somebody's validating it. And it's, it's just a very time-consuming and cumbersome work, but this product will be able to have their tool do some, some of those checks automatically. And then when it does those checks, it notifies the person that has control of that data to make those changes on a more consistent and update, updated system. So it'll be a lot better to have our clean data or it'll be a lot nicer when we're reporting the state, it'll be easier and it should make people's lives a lot better when it comes to efficiency. Again, to improve some efficiency within our district, we originally wrote our own help desk software. So we had our own help desk software and most places don't do that. Most places buy a product on the market, but schools are fairly unique in what they do to support. do to support their clientele. And now there are now products on the market that do target K-12 education specifically. So we'll be moving to that. That'll free up some of our software developer time to work more targeted toward areas that are, that are not met by consumer or, or commercial-grade products that are available to us. We can use that resource on the programmer side more efficiently, but it'll also give us better data and analytics when it comes to the way that we do provide support. We actually started rolling out some of this just the other day. And this allows us to get feedback directly from the individual as they go through the ticketing system. And we can have two-way conversations that happens where historically that was a very one-way kind of experience. So this isn't really my exciting piece. We have Dr. Feden will talk a lot more about SPED Advantage later on, I'm sure, but we're involved in SPED Advantage. We again, wrote our own software for tracking of special education documentation requirements, which was ahead of the time, honestly, before, before anybody else was probably thinking of doing it. But there comes a time and a place when, when companies on the market can do it better than you can do it. And they have resources to constantly and consistently update, update their stuff to meet state and federal reporting requirements. So we'll be moving to SPED Advantage and my team is working on making sure those data integrations and that historical data comes over effectively. And that, we can also feed that data back out of that system into our Infinite Campus system for, for reporting purposes. So that's going so far, so good. I say that because all, you know, IT projects, sometimes you hit a roadblock that you didn't anticipate, but so far has been going fairly well and we anticipate that that'll launch next fall. So we have, as I think we've discussed this before and you've had others report a little bit on it, but our classrooms are getting some new technology. We're getting voice amplification systems. This one's a little near and dear to my heart because my own spouse is hearing impaired and people often say, oh, I can speak loud enough. It doesn't matter how well, how loud you can speak if I can't hear it past all the students and all the ambient noise that's taking place in the classroom. So it's exciting for us to have this going in. As you can see, we already have deployed equipment and classrooms on the east side of 229. The middle area will be next and then we'll continue on to the other side. And then after all those, we will continue up through the grades. That's not going to be an overnight project, but it's moving along at a, at a pretty consistent speed now. And we don't anticipate any major hiccups as we move along with that. As part of that, we're also rolling out the interactive view boards by ViewSonic. So we have 517 panels deployed. That number is not right anymore. I believe that number is at like 530, something, something like that in the last couple of days. They continue to roll out pretty consistently. This project is interesting. It started long before I ever came on board with the district, as you all know. And we couldn't get any of them. They had a backlog of like 60,000 orders in the country and we just couldn't get product and we were really nervous starting, going into the summer, start of the year. We were fortunate to get the product that we needed, but we now have all of the product and now it's really up to us to get them, to coordinate, to get them deployed and, and be able to train them in a time and manner. Our expected finish date is school year 2022. But that's moving along just smooth as can be now. Our new website. So you know, we've had some hiccups moving our, to a new website. We had some problems with our previous vendor, but that has been remedied and we've moved on to a new vendor. That vendor is moving very quickly and we're excited about the fact that we're anticipating a launch sometime late February, early March. But with that, the nice thing about this is not to think of it as just a website, think of it as a communication and marketing platform. It consolidates a lot of resources into one place. So it allows our communications team and our elementary, all of our buildings really to be able to post once and apply on a lot of places. So I can write a long-form article, I can post that article to my website, I can announce it in social media, my website, my app, and all, all in one time instead of having to go to multiple platforms to make that happen. We're really excited about what that's going to do, not to mention the refresh and just the look and feel and how it'll bring a better presence to us on the web. So Single Sign-On is a big project for us. How many of you love how many passwords that you have to memorize? How many of you have more passwords than you can remember and how many that you can't remember? So at Sioux Falls, we have a similar thing. Again, I'm sorry if you can't see those little pictures up there, but it's a web of, of scariness. It's, it's, these, that's just a small collection of the systems that we integrate and that we have to provide authentication and identity management for. And if you work in an enterprise and, and any enterprise now, you probably have an idea of what Single Sign-On does. We have some of that in place. So if you log into certain things, then you have a Single Sign-On kind of experience. But we have some key core systems that are, are still very separate. And so we've begun the process of figuring out, how are we going to get that fixed and how we're going to streamline it? Because it's going to improve efficiencies for our staff, it'll make their day better and they don't have to remember different things to get into different platforms. It'll make our students' lives easier when they know that if they log in with this credential, it'll get what they want. It'll also make it easier for us to secure and control identity management and resource management. So we're really excited about it. We're in the early stages of that. We just got the, you know, the, the initial finding process done of all of the systems that we're, that we need to integrate and streamline. But we, we have some momentum. We think that we'll see some, some big turnaround or, or some happy things happening for all of our staff by the fall. They should feel a lot better about their logging experience. So our future areas that we're, we're looking at is to streamline our educational operational tool vetting and integration. So on a day-to-day basis, we get requests for all kinds of different online resources and tools, whether they're academic or they're business operational. And we'd like to make that as clear and easy to request and also know what's available to you, to our staff, so that they know, that they can find resources that we already provide. And also give a, a platform for our parents to see what we're using, why we're using it and what kind of data implications that may be applied for those groups of people. So that's really early in its, its phases as well. Of course, enhanced security protection. Who does, who doesn't hear at least weekly about some kind of scenario with data? We want to do our very best with that. So we'll be continuing to double down if we haven't already doubled down, tripled down to improve that. Customer service is a big area of focus. You saw Incident IQ. You'll hear more about that topic as we continue to try to build out efficiencies within the team to make it more enjoyable. I don't think anybody wakes up in the morning and says, can I call tech support today? Well, we'd love to feel like they would love to call us. And then the last thing on this list is enhanced warranty and repair process. As you know, we self-insure some of our, our devices, we warranty some devices, we do some repairs ourselves, we outsource some repairs. We'd like to streamline that process, make it more efficient and allocate resources in a better way with it. And as, we've been in our one-to-one long enough now to have enough data to really look at that process and make it better. That's all, that's all I've got. So questions?
Well, thank you. And thank you for adding that audio component. That's also near and dear to me. I have a son who's hearing impaired. So it just, to add that in those classrooms is just going to be so significant for our students and for our staff not to lose their voice while they're trying to speak to the students every, all day, every day and, and doing that. So it's a great component and good use of our ESR funds to do that. So I appreciate that.
I think we learned from when we were virtual as well, you know, if, if teachers would like to record their lesson, you know, it makes it much easier to do so, so that anybody that's watching it either as a repeat, you know, to try to get a better grasp on a concept or because they missed something, it makes that a lot more effective as well. So yeah, technology's not going anywhere. And so it's nice to see kind of the, the wide variety of things that we're working on from the teacher and employee experience, the Single Sign-On, which would be huge. I have it now and it's, it's, it's so nice and I have to remember, like it's just one and done. You change your password and it changes everything. So that will be a really nice ease of access for them too. But then down to things like a warranty or a repair for whether it's a student or a staff member. So wide variety of activities, but all very important to the final user of your services. So good work.
Yeah, I think we forget that our district, if we were a, a community in South Dakota, we'd be the third largest community. We'd be bigger than Aberdeen with our students and staff. So when you see some, I was thinking back to your comment, the astronomical numbers, we have to remember these economies of scales and we are very cognizant to our taxpayers. I think Todd recognized that of the 11 school districts in the Sioux Falls metro area, our tax levy is 10th out of 11. So we are cognizant of those. So, but when you see these large numbers, we have to remember the amount of people we're serving and buying for in both the, the technology world and our facilities. Our high schools are bigger than probably about 250 communities in our state. So we, we are a much bigger district than a lot of other things around here. So we have to remember that, but yet keep those taxpayers' concerns as well at heart. And that's why when we did the bond and we, when we go forward on our other projects, we always are looking at what our surrounding community is doing and what they are providing for their community and what they're charging them. Because we do know it's the taxpayers' money, not ours to be spending.
I think that's a very important thing to stay. And I, I, I actually had a conversation recently with someone about a technical issue. And they asked, well, how, what's the percentage of your population that's being, being impacted by this issue? And sometimes we get concerned about percentages because it can skew the information, right? So this particular issue was impacting our iPad deployment. And you saw the, the raw number of that iPad deployment, percentile-wise, it's very small. So you know, you say, oh, but it's about 7% of our population impacted. And they're like, oh, well, just tell them to do it a different way. And we had to say, no, our, our, our seven percentile is larger than most school districts, not just in our state, but in many states.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Emmett. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the technology report?
So moved. Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. We will move on to the legislative update.
Well, it's good to go. Okay. Tomorrow, the legislative session, 2022 legislative session starts. And I'm just going to, you guys all know this, but I'm just going to walk through our process because I don't, so folks know how we track bills and what we do here. So we have something we call our legislative position statement, our statements. All bills relevant to the district are analyzed by the appropriate administrator. Special Ed Director gets special ed bills, I get the finance bills and so on and so forth. We develop a recommended position and it's either support, opposed, amend or neutral. And then the rationale for that decision. When the board meets at its next regular meeting, we bring it to the board for approval. Sometimes the board makes tweaks to it. Sometimes, usually they agree with the position, but then it becomes put out there that this is a board-approved position for the district. And our positions are available at that website there. I'm not going to read it off, but they will be, legislative session starts tomorrow. That'll probably be up and running sometime tomorrow or Wednesday.
I would like to give kudos to your team on that because legislators will tell us that our legislative platform is the easiest one for them to understand and how, easy to read and so forth. So for our community, thank you.
Yeah, there's several people go and do that. And Bev and Andrea make it so the public, or so the legislators, it's easy for them to find and it's easy for them to read. So there's a lot of work that goes into that. So here's some key legislative dates. On the 11th, tomorrow, first day of session, we already have 58 House bills and 75 Senate bills. There's about a handful that relate to us so far. And you will see those next board meeting. So that's the 24th. That'll be the first time you review the, the position statements from the, the administrators. On the 27th, that's January, that's the last day for unlimited bills from legislators. After that, I think they get one a day or something like that. February 2nd is the last day for individual bills. February 3rd is the last day for committee bills. So you get a pile between around the 27th. I mean, there's a ton of bills that come in at that time. And February 14th is the next time the board after the 24th will review those positions and probably the last time for new, for new bills. There might be some amendments later, but that'll be probably the last time for new bills. On the 22nd, it's the last day for a bill to get out of its committee in its house that it originated in. On the 23rd is the last day to get out. So if it's a House bill, it's got to be out of the House by the 23rd or it dies. On the 25th is the last day for appropriations, special appropriations to, to get out of the House of origin. On the, sorry, I got the dates wrong. On the 23rd, it's the last day for special appropriation bills to pass the House of origin. So that's actually the 26th. Didn't change the date on that. March 3rd is the last day for bills to pass both houses. So if it hasn't got out of the second house by the 3rd, it, it dies. And then they, they use the next few days to, to have conference committees and marry the differences between the bill. So March 10th is the main run of the legislative session that will end. And that's why we schedule our big budget meeting for the week after that. So then we know what our revenues are going to be. And then March 28th is veto day. So with that, I just ask you to acknowledge the update on the 2022 legislative session.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Second. A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. That is acknowledged. Thank you. And yeah, as you stated, next board meeting, we will have our positions going forward. So anything else worth a good [inaudible]? Seeing none, do you have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.